Evening, thank you for joining us. There have been some changes to the rules of procedure that I thought I would like to mention to you upfront so that you will understand that you're being given two separate opportunities to address the council. And also modified was the method of signing up to speak. I'll read an excerpt of the applicable rules so that everyone has an opportunity to hear and understand them as soon as possible. "Any member of the public not a petitioner or of an item shall be able to speak for up to three minutes total to address postponed regular business consent agenda or study items or any other item on the agenda as permitted under the Open Meetings Act." This will be during the first of two public comment sections. "Any member of the public not a petitioner of an item shall be able to speak for up to three minutes to address any topic not on the agenda as also permitted under the Open Meetings Act during the second public comment section later on in the meeting." All members of the public who wish to address the council at a meeting shall be allowed to speak only if they have signed up to speak within 30 minutes prior to the meeting or within 15 minutes after the meeting's start time. Signing up to speak requires each speaker to provide his or her name and residency status, Troy resident, non-resident, or Troy business owner. If the speaker is addressing an item or items that appear on the pre-printed agenda, then the speaker shall also identify each such agenda item numbered to be addressed. So I would encourage you to sign up now to speak if you want to, if you haven't already done so, because we'll be shutting down the kiosk at approximately 7:45. Of course, we're giving some latitude to getting accustomed to these new rules of procedure. Cindy Stewart is in the lobby to help out if you need assistance, and we hope that these new rules will allow council an opportunity to proceed with the business of the city in a more efficient fashion, and we certainly hope that you'll agree that these new rules are preferable. We'll begin this evening with an invocation given by Pastor Bob Chody from the Troy Assembly of God, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America. Please join me in standing. Good evening, Pastor.
Good evening. Lord, we want to thank you tonight for this great city that we live in. Lord, we want to thank you for the good people that make up this city. And Lord, I want to thank you most of all for your help and your guidance, and Lord, all the good things that you have poured out upon us. Lord, I pray that you'd help us to recognize and know that every good and every perfect gift comes from above and comes down from the Father of lights. Lord, I thank you tonight that you have appointed these leaders in our city. I thank you, Lord, that every position is appointed by you. And Lord, I pray that every one of our leaders would understand and know there's a great responsibility that's put on them, not only by the citizens of this city, but also, Lord, by you. And I pray that they would execute their responsibilities with righteousness and with goodness, and, Lord, with justice. Lord, we do lean upon you, and we desperately need your help. You said in your word that without you we can do nothing. You also told us, Lord, according to your word, that it's in you that we live and move and have our being. Lord, I pray that you would give wisdom in every decision tonight, as you instructed us to pray. We ask you, Lord, thy kingdom come and thy will be done. Of all of all things, I pray that this would be accomplished in this meeting. And Lord, we thank you and praise you for all of your blessings, and we commit this night into your hands, and we ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the universal, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. The September 10th, 2012 Troy City Council meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Mrs. Vittner?
Mayor Daniels?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming? Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
While I'm present, would someone like to read the resolution excusing Councilman Fleming?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby excuses the absence of Councilmember Fleming at the regular City Council meeting of September 10th due to being out of the county.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Proton McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion? Vote please, Mrs. Vittner?
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. We have two items under certificates of recognition and special presentations, with the first being recognition of a high honor given to the City of Troy's Fire Chief, Mr. William Nelson. At the Michigan Association of Fire Chiefs' Summer's Leadership Conference on August 23rd, 2012, Fire Chief William Nelson from the City of Troy, Michigan, was recognized as the Michigan Fire Chief of the Year based on his many contributions and accomplishments to the fire service during his career. The Executive Board of the Oakland County Fire Mutual Aid Association strongly endorsed Chief Nelson as an extremely active member of their mutual aid organization and as a dedicated fire service leader for many years. To give some background, Chief Nelson became Troy's Fire Marshal in 1975. He continued his career in the City of Troy by becoming the Assistant Fire Chief in June of 1989. Chief Nelson has a bachelor's degree from Madonna University and completed the executive fire officer's training through the National Fire Academy in January of 1993. Chief Nelson was first appointed as Troy's Fire Chief in January of 1994, where he has honorably served the City of Troy for the past 18 years. Thank you very much, and congratulations, Chief Nelson. If you'd like to stand up, we can honor you. I would now like to ask Cindy Stewart to come to the podium, our Community Affairs Director, to give us a background for recognizing one of our brave military warriors here in Troy.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in 2007 in February, our City Council passed a resolution that since we valued our freedom and servicemen and women who fight for our country, that we would recognize any servicemen and women who returned while they were, you know, fighting for our country. And we would do this in the form of a proclamation. We also have a sign. I'll go run and get it while you're reading the proclamation. But we would do any of those things for any of the men and women. So if parents, because it's usually the parents would call my office at 524-1147, we would be more than happy to do a proclamation. If sometime they're too nervous or shy to come before City Council, we would gladly just provide the sign that they can put on their lawn to welcome them home. And part of it, it says, "And the City of Troy thanks you." So with that, I lead into your proclamation, and I'll go get the sign.
If my son Corporal Mark Daniels will come to the podium, I'll read the proclamation. I can't help it, I'm his mom. Whereas whenever called upon to defend our nation's security at home or abroad, the men and women who serve in the United States Armed Forces respond immediately, placing this nation's interests above their own. Corporal Mark J. Daniels is one such hero. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices made by our military personnel are vital to maintaining America's blessings of freedom and liberty, and whereas the families of those serving in our nation's military make meaningful sacrifices and provide the support, love, and dedication essential to their well-being and service, such as Mark's mom, Janice; and whereas Corporal Mark Daniels joined the Marines in July of 2010 and was stationed in Okinawa, Japan for a two-year deployment starting in March of 2011, he was deployed from Okinawa to Afghanistan in February of 2012 and returned from Afghanistan to Okinawa in August of 2012 to continue his active-duty service in the Marine Corps, which will conclude in July of 2014. Whereas Corporal Mark Daniels joins the great heritage of the brave warriors serving for freedom around the world in such places as Yorktown and Lexington, Gettysburg, Normandy, Iwo Jima, and Okinawa, and now in places like Fallujah, Kabul, and Baghdad. And now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and City Council of the City of Troy hereby proclaim September 10, 2012, as an official date in the City of Troy to most gratefully honor, sincerely appreciate, and wholeheartedly thank Corporal Mark J. Daniels, Troy High Graduate Class of 2010, for his service in the United States Marine Corps. And be it further resolved that the City of Troy encourages citizens, schools, and businesses in the City of Troy to use this occasion to recognize, honor, and show appreciation to Corporal Mark J. Daniels for his dedicated service and sacrifice to our nation, presented this 10th day of September, 2012. Protocol, allow me to hug the receptionist. Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are no carryover items. We do have a public hearing for the Planned Unit Development Project 004, which is called the Big Beaver Center. I believe there's someone here to make a presentation, Mr. Culpepper, is that so?
Yes, Mr. Brent Sevanant will begin the presentation explaining the city's undertakings.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers. As you indicated, there's a public hearing this evening. I'm going to make a, try to make a very brief presentation, and I'm going to tag-team with Ben Carlisle from Carlisle-Wortman. There's an aerial on the screen now showing the location of the subject property. It's located on the north side of Big Beaver between Alpine and McClure. In terms of a frame of reference, Somerset Collection is to the west, and Crooks Road is to the east, and the property is approximately seven and a half acres in size. The southern, approximately 75% of the property is zoned PUD, Planned Unit Development, and the northern two parcels are presently zoned R1B, One Family Residential. I'm going to give a really brief primer on planned unit developments for those of you and those watching at home who maybe don't know a lot about planned unit developments. A PUD, Planned Unit Development, also known as a PUD, you're going to hear me refer to it as a PUD numerous times, a PUD is a development tool that provides flexibility from zoning ordinance requirements. And in turn, it provides for more creativity and better design, better site design for projects, and it's a negotiated process between the city and an applicant. I'd like to give you some, a really brief history on the PUD known as, presently known as the Monarch Private Residences. On December 19th, 2005, City Council granted final preliminary approval for the Monarch Private Residences. It was at this time that it was actually, the property was zoned PUD. And the project at the time, don't look at what's on the screen because it's not, I'm going to back this up, it's truly not relevant for what we're talking about this evening for the, was approved in 2005. But at the time, there was a 23-story tower, a 12-story tower combined containing 155 residential units. There were 17,900 square feet of commercial approved, structured as well as surface parking. There was a townhouse component on the north known as the Villas, which contained 52 units, sum total 207 residential units in addition to the other commercial and the parking. Unfortunately, the applicant did not commence construction within two years of final approval, therefore, it's considered, the PUD project is considered abandoned. So the project itself is abandoned, but the city did not take any steps toward rezoning the property from PUD to underlying zoning. So it's still zoned PUD, or Planned Unit Development. Fast-forwarding six years, the subject property has been acquired by AF Jonah Development Company, who's the applicant, and they are, they have submitted an application to revise the Planned Unit Development or the PUD. The project has been renamed Big Beaver Center PUD, and the project includes, I've got a site plan up on the screen, a 20,000, 24,000 square foot commercial component here on the frontage. I've been told by someone in this room, and I use this pointer too liberally, so I'm going to really try to be calm with this thing. 24,000 square foot retail component along the front, a 4,000 square foot bank branch, including a drive-thru. They're two separate buildings. There's a, there's a walkway that separates them, connected to Plaza area and outdoor seating along Big Beaver. This element is consistent with the Big Beaver Corridor Study, which speaks for making, having development that's more pedestrian-friendly, more of a people place, and strengthens the relationship between the street and the building. Parking's located to the rear, it's a landscape parking lot with a little number of street trees. Then here's a demarcation line between the commercial and the residential component. North of this line, there are 16 residential units. There's eight units on the south side of the road. There's a road that joins Alpine and McClure, and then there's eight more units, and these units are buffered with landscaping from not only the residential residences to the north, but also the commercial to the south. So that, in a nutshell, is what is proposed with this, with this project. I would note that the revised PUD is significantly less intense than what was initially approved in 2005 about seven years ago. The project was developed, negotiated over approximately the last six months. It involved a number of meetings between staff and the applicant, as well as meetings with the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item on July 24th, 2012, recommended approval of the PUD on August 14th, 2012. The applicant is before us this evening, seeking a number of approvals. You'll notice the resolution before you this evening is somewhat lengthy, somewhat involved. But here's what they're asking for. They're asking to officially rescind and abandon the previous PUD. They're seeking rezoning of the northernmost two properties, which is 3128 Alpine and 3124 McClure. I showed you a zoning map. It's these two properties here. They're seeking to rezone those from R1B to PUD. They're seeking approval of the concept development plan for the revised PUD, and they're also seeking approval for the preliminary development plan for the revised PUD. That's as per our zoning ordinance. And they're approving, they seek approval of the development agreement for the revised PUD. Development agreement really sets out the expectations for the developer in constructing and managing the PUD. All of these steps, as I indicated, are listed in the resolution that's before you this evening. A, as you indicated, Madam Mayor, a public hearing is scheduled for this evening to solicit public input for this project. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Ben Carlisle from Carlisle-Wortman Associates, that's the city's planning consultant, and he's going to briefly summarize the project. Thank you.
Thank you. For those I haven't met, again, I'm Ben Carlisle, Carlisle-Wortman. We are the city's planning consultants. And I'll real briefly go over, summarize the development and then answer any questions that the council might have. In total, the parcel development is approximately seven and a half acres. Five acres of that is the residential portion of that, and two and a half acres is the commercial portion. The applicant is proposing approximately 27,000, 27,000 square feet of commercial, 24 of that is, 24,000 of that is the retail, and then 4,000 of that, or 3,000 of that is the bank. In addition, the applicant is asking for 16 single-family residential homes on the northern end of the site. In regards to the master plan as well as the overall design, the development is located in the urban mixed-use district of the Big Beaver Corridor Plan, as well as the Big Beaver District in the master plan. The intent for the Big Beaver Corridor, and especially this section of the Big Beaver Corridor, was for more dense urban-style mixed-use development, which includes both retail, residential, as well as office uses. In addition, these documents did include a number of recommendations regarding building placement, parking location, urban design standards, as well as architectural design standards. The plan really encouraged the redevelopment of existing sites with more dense mix of uses and dense urban design-type developments. And overall, the intent of the document was to encourage development that converted Big Beaver into more of an urban-style street with pedestrian amenities. So it became more of a people place and a destination for the City of Troy, rather than an automobile corridor which it currently exists. And this, again, was a long-term vision, we know is going to take many years to come to fruition, and again, this was a part of the 20-year master plan for the proposed, for Big Beaver. Since that adoption of the master plan, as well as the subsequent adoption of the zoning ordinance, this is really the first large-scale or medium-scale development to happen on Big Beaver in front of, in front of this council. And so this is the first time when the adoption, when the vision of the, of the Big Beaver Corridor Plan can really put, be put into some sort of development concept. With that, all that being said, we do find that the development does meet the recommendations of the master plan, as well as the Big Beaver Corridor. The developer has put the building close and approximate in fronting on Big Beaver Corridor, and has put in the parking in rear. This is an attempt to build, to create a presence on Big Beaver Corridor, as well as providing some pedestrian amenities for the corridor itself. The applicant has provided some prominent ground floor retail, as well as some interesting and visual architectural design, as well as create a public benefit of the pedestrian realm and pedestrian streetscape along Big Beaver Corridor. In fact, this design and streetscape really is one that can be emulated across the corridor as more development occurs in the future. As Director Sevanant indicated, this is a planned unit development, and as such, there is flexibility in terms of the zoning ordinance requirements in order to get a better designed product. But with that being said, it's important to consider what, the type of development that would occur if it was simply underlying zoning. Most likely, the underlying zoning for this would be to rezone back to Big Beaver Form Based District. And with that being said, the applicant is seeking two variations from the Big Beaver Form Based District that I'd like to highlight. The first is the applicant is asking for an increase in the residential density from 12 units to 16 units. And secondly, looking totality at the site in whole, they exceed the 20% landscape requirement. However, the commercial portion taken unto itself is only providing 14% of the required 20% site landscaping. So, but like I said, in totality, the site well exceeds a 20% landscaping taken in total. Outside of those two deviations, the proposal does meet all bulk placement, height, setback, design requirements, and parking requirements of the Big Beaver Form Based District. In regards to traffic access and circulation, this was an issue that came up often with the Planning Commission deliberations, as well as in our discussion with the applicant. And we have provided a memo from the city's traffic engineering consultant, Mr. Dearing from OHM Consulting. And based on Mr. Dearing's review, the applicant has modified their site plan and met those recommendations from Mr. Dearing, and he is here tonight to answer any specific questions the council might have in regards to traffic. Since this is a planned unit development, it is reviewed under specific standards which are listed in Article 11 of the zoning ordinance. These standards include requirement for appropriate mix of uses, enhancement of public health, safety, and welfare benefits, creative site planning and building design, potential impact on transportation systems, and lastly, consistency with the master plan. In summary, we do find that the development does meet all the PUD standards listed in Article 11 of the ordinance. So after listening to public inputs, the applicant's comments, the findings of staff, as well as the consultant, the Planning Commission did vote in a five-to-one favor in support of the proposed project recommendation for council. So in summary, we do find that the proposed development greatly, is greatly reduced in scale and potential impact on the neighborhood than what was previously approved for this site. The applicant has balanced what the planning, what the master plan recommends, which really is for more intensity than what the applicant has proposed. They balance what the master plan calls for versus what the neighbors had projected in terms of impact, and we really do find that the applicant has provided a good balance between the commercial orientation and nature of Big Beaver, as well as the single-family neighborhood to the north. So in summary, we do find that this project meets the intent of the master plan, meets the zoning ordinance requirements, and we do propose and do support the project and recommend approval. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
You may be seated.
Did you gain my attention?
Yes. Councilwoman Slater?
I have some, some questions, but would it be best to wait until we close it and bring it back here? Is that?
Mayor, if you have questions that can be answered by administration, you could ask them now, or you can wait until later. It's your call on that. Maybe the same question that the audience has as well, so that may guide you.
Yeah. Mayor, if I could?
Yes, sir.
I think you're going to hear from some residents on this that are in the area regarding traffic safety issues at Alpine and Big Beaver. So maybe if I could get somebody to address that from, from city administration or the consultant. From what I'm hearing from the residents is that they're not opposed to the project. The only complaints I've received are safety issues at Big Beaver and Alpine. So if somebody could, could speak to that, it might help start this off, because I know there's a lot of residents here that are going to talk about that.
I'm going to introduce, I'm going to introduce Stephen Dearing from OHM, and Bill, you're going to stay there? Just put a slide up for him here.
Good morning.
Good evening.
Good evening. My review of this project was rather limited in focus and scope to the site plan and how it was going to interact with Big Beaver, Alpine, and McClure. I have heard rumors, let's say, of underlying safety issues, but I've not made a study of the intersection of Alpine at Big Beaver in terms of what pre-existing crash problems there might be, in terms of how the signals, as they're currently timed along Big Beaver Road, provides gaps for traffic trying to enter the Big Beaver traffic stream from Alpine or McClure. So, again, I was focusing mostly in terms of the static inner relationships of the site plan and the position of their driveways. So with that as my disclaimer, I'd be more than happy to address whatever concerns you might have, if you could better explain them to me.
Maybe it might be best to listen to the audience, and then maybe we could talk to you again after that.
Be more than happy to. Thank you.
Could we have an overview of the traffic flow that, you know, from, from previous studies in terms of, as he was saying, he doesn't have the, the history of that area in terms of the traffic signals and the timing? Is there any information on that that we could hear this evening? No? Okay. Well, if you'll take your seat, we'll open the public hearing and then we'll call you back. Are there any other questions from council? Public hearing is now open. We have a number of people who have signed up to speak on this issue. Jeanne Stein? Good evening, Mrs. Stein.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've lived on the corner of Bowlin and Alpine in the adjacent sub to the proposed development for 50 years. Some of the homeowners in my sub have lived there even longer. We We enjoy the luxury of R1B zoning, and most of us have made our homes our biggest investment, caring for and enjoying our large lots. The plan before you tonight calls for 16 homes where, under the previous development, only six homes existed. Our call would be for an extension of the backyards of the northern row of homes from 45 to 75 feet, providing a more acceptable buffer for current residents. The previous Monarch Plan provided a 120-foot buffer. But before I address more of the intricacies of this plan, I want to preface my remarks with the fact that we are not opposed to the concept of this PUD. Quite the contrary. We're looking forward to the time of its completion, because it will bring a certain luster to this, to this section of the Big Beaver Road. It'll provide impetus toward the application of a walkable community for Big Beaver Road, and it will help boost our local economy. But back to the plan before you. With the bank's proposed egress onto Alpine from the drive-through windows, we have an accident waiting to happen. And it should be noted, this would be the only bank in the city of Troy exiting onto a residential street, a really bad precedent. If the bank were positioned at the east end of this mall, rather than the west, it could be easily accommodated with drive-through capability, resulting in the removal of a curb cut onto Alpine, which would also make it much safer for drivers entering and exiting Alpine. The plan also calls for two curb cuts onto Alpine from the retail parking lot. Again, for the safety of pedestrians and drivers alike, one curb cut could accommodate traffic entering and exiting. Our subdivision has no sidewalks, and the children in our neighborhood walk to both the elementary and the middle schools, which are located on Bowlin Street at the end of Alpine. We already experienced traffic problems, because currently Alpine and Bowlin are used as part of a cut-through during rush hour traffic to avoid the light and the Michigan left turn at 16 Mile and Crooks. The additional 16 homes will probably generate more cars than our current homes on Alpine generate today. Having said all this, I appreciate the fact that Jonah Development Company is considering the application of the Big Beaver Center PUD at this site. The corner has been vacant for a number of years, and this development will certainly attract new people to Troy, as well as to enhance the streetscape here and help the city's revenue stream. But that does not negate the concerns I have expressed tonight, and because of them, I talked with my neighbor, Tom Crent. Tom is a graphic designer and was able to put our shared worries and remedies on paper, which he will display when he is called upon. And thank you for listening. There are a number of residents here supporting our petition, and I would like, if it was okay, Mayor, to ask them to stand and be recognized.
That would be fine.
Would the residents please stand and be recognized? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Tom Crent?
You know, if you'd like to hear, can I talk to you here? Should I move the chart over to the middle?
Well, I would think you should move the chart over to the middle, so that we could hear you speak.
That's what I'll do.
Thank you.
I'm Tom Crent, and like Jeanne Stein was saying, a number of the residents got together, and we thought we could make some safety improvements to the existing proposal from the developer. And, and what you're seeing on this side is the developer's proposal. What you're seeing on that side is what the group of neighbors have come forth and made suggestions. Before I get any further, I just want to say that I am speaking as Tom Crent, a resident, not member of the Troy Planning Commission. And again, echoing Jeanne Stein's comments, we welcome this development. We think it's, it would be great, but we want to make sure it's a safe one. And as you know, probably your most, your most dear, or your biggest responsibility to the city of Troy and its residents is safety, and public safety is what we're talking about right now. On the existing, the proposed plan by the developer, he's got this bank right on the corner. This is Alpine here, this is Big Beaver here. Again, this would be Alpine, this is Big Beaver. But we've got two lanes of drive-through bank tellers here. They enter right here onto Alpine. The distance from a driver coming down Big Beaver, turning this corner and meeting that car is 60 feet. Cars make those corners around 15 to 25 miles an hour, depending on how skilled or unskilled they are. And the point I'm getting at is, at 20 miles an hour, they're traveling at 30 feet per second. In 60 feet, they'll be there in two seconds. Now, this driver's facing west, this driver's facing west. By the time this driver comes around and sees this driver, he's got about a second to react. This driver has no hope to back up, put it in reverse and back up. They're vulnerable to the driver's side facing the oncoming car. If this person isn't skilled enough to hit the brakes hard enough and to stop from 20 miles an hour in one second, there's an accident, period. So this is, this is the reason I'm bringing this up to the attention of council right now. In addition, we've got two lanes of traffic coming out onto Alpine from the retail parking, causing a back, a queue. And I want to point out, after two cars get in the queue, this person can't get out. And I think what's going to happen is the bank customers are going to say, I don't want to be in that position. Because when we, we did a little survey with our own neighborhood, we lined up five cars during rush hour, and it took between one to two minutes for the first two cars to get out. The fifth and sixth car took up to five minutes to get out. I can see, because this is going to be retail, it's going to be a constant flow of cars, this queue can back quite a ways up. What I'm proposing is this, move the bank from here to here. Traffic will come up into the bank directly off of Big Beaver. There's a line of sight of 150 feet between opposing traffic, and they're at parking lot speeds, not at 20 miles an hour. I guess I got to go, but that was my main point.
Thank you very much.
I'll take this down, and if there's any further questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Barbara Dawson?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. I, I sent the email. I hope you all got, I have a copy of it if anybody needs. I'd like to second what Mrs. Stein and Mr. Crent said about moving the bank to the other side. I'd like to see it even go beyond that. I would prefer for the parking also to exit onto Big Beaver. Big Beaver's designed for traffic. Alpine is not designed for traffic. It's a residential street. It's actually, was explained to me back when the Monarch was, proposal was going, going through, it's actually a substandard street, so it's not even as wide as it's supposed to be. And now we're talking about putting quite a bit of traffic onto this street. And I would like to see us not divert traffic to a side residential street, and instead put it on Big Beaver, which was built to handle it. One other thing I would like to say is that just because the Monarch passed, doesn't mean it was the right thing. And some of these issues we did bring up at that time, and we were all thankful that we didn't have to deal with the traffic issues that we knew were going to happen with the Monarch. But on the other hand, we do hope that there is development that happens here, and I hope that there's development that happens here. I just hope that we also think about it and make sure that we're not compromising the safety of the neighborhood behind us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been on Alpine for 30 years. I watched the Monarch. I was glad to see that it didn't go through. I would have had 70 people with their dogs walking in front of my house every day. But anyhow, Monarch's done. We have a lot of vacancies in Troy.
Could you, could you move the microphone closer?
We truthfully don't need more commercial property in Troy. I know the bank is the anchor. With the construction there, as you see now, there's a driveway out on the back of that area there, and it has a no-right-turn sign on it. That's how bad Alpine is already, with nothing there. There's a sign there, you can't turn right. You have to go back out and come around the turnaround. The turnaround is a suicide thing. You just take your chances on getting out. Maybe we need a light in between there someplace. We need something different, though. You can't get out onto Big Beaver, you take your, your chances. It's really bad. It needs a total study there, from Somerset back to Crooks. It's just very difficult. And I'm not against progress, but this needs to be looked into a little more detail. And Tom has a great idea, if they have to have the bank for the anchor to put it on the other end. I'm not clear as to how much parking space they have in the back there, and what kind of businesses they'll be renting to. Different businesses require more parking. A beauty shop requires more parking than an attorney, et cetera, et cetera. But I think that should all be looked into before this is approved. And it's been a battle with traffic there forever, and you can come in there any day. We put up timers regularly for children to show the speeds, so they don't go so fast that they get them before they get a chance to get off, you know, get out of the way. And that is a thoroughfare between Alpine over to Crooks, early in the morning and early in the afternoon. And it's a speed trap also. Oh, not a speed trap, but people go pretty fast. Anyhow, I live there, I love it, and try to work together. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good, thank you.
Olekowski. I live 3243 Alpine, which should be directly behind where the development is. And we moved there in 1998. We were one of the first families to move in with young children. What we've seen over the last several years is more and more children are moving into that area. What's interesting that you don't see on the picture here is that there are five residential streets that encompass this southeast corner, all of which are walking. And when the traffic comes through in the morning and the afternoon, it's exactly the same time our children are going. I would ask, in the interest of the development, that the developer works with the residents to make our streets safer. You know, our kids have jumped in the ditch to, to miss cars, they've done all kinds of things. And in the development, I mean, having overgrown grass there isn't good for us either, so having a great development there, but really looking in the concern for the kids walking to school, I think is very, very important. Thanks.
Thank you. Chad O'Coach?
Hello.
I apologize.
First, thank you for letting us be here tonight. My daughter, you know, just turned five years old and started kindergarten this year, and it's my first time getting to walk down the, down the street with my daughter to go to Bemis at the end of the block. And the greatest thing about it is you see just a plethora of, of kids going to school, whether they're going to Bowlin at the end of the street, or they're going to Bemis. And when I, as I walk through life, I try to always put myself in the shoes of another. And when I look at this development, I understand, you know, the financial and the growth, and I support that. I understand where they're coming from. But what I ask you is if this neighbor, and asks this of the council, who are making the decisions based upon the safety of our children and the pedestrians, if, if this was your neighborhood, that you were, you have your children, and you walk down the streets, and you play and you enjoy, and this development is coming in, and they're going to have the exit come on out onto a residential area, how would you feel? What would you do? And how would you react? And I just ask you to view it from that perspective. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes the residents who signed up to speak on this issue. Public hearing is now closed. We'll return the item to the council table for resolution. Would someone like to remove the resolution forward? Mayor, you may, I believe that the petitioners here, I don't know if they want an opportunity to present to you or not, but you may, they may want an opportunity to make a presentation. I thought that that would happen during the discussion. But that's fine, if, if the petitioner would like to come back to the podium? Or come to the podium? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We've had long discussions and meetings with staff and with the planners, and we looked at all the issues that, that the residents bring up. You know, we can't control traffic outside of our development. We can't control the traffic that's, that Alpine and McClure that are being used as cut-throughs to get around the intersection of Crooks and Big Beaver. I believe that that's a policing issue. On our property, we've, the exits that are both on McClure, excuse me, we don't go to McClure, but just on Alpine, we have a no-left turn. So anything that's, any, any cars that are moving out of our property have to turn south. There's no going onto Alpine. I believe that most of the traffic problems that are there are already there, and the problems need to be policed. I believe that this is a good project, and we've gone the extra mile to create an environment that's, that I believe that the neighborhood will use more than anyone else. I've also got someone, Mike Tierney, who's with Flagstar Bank, who'd like to address if it's possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Mike Tierney. I'm the market president of Flagstar Bank. I am a 28-year resident of Troy. My kids went to Bowlin and graduated from Troy High, and it's great to see another Troy High graduate, serving his country. We are a large employer here, as you know. We employ 2,500 people here in the city of Troy. We just took 95,000 additional square feet on Big Beaver that we moved 500 of our people to. We've hired 500 new employees this year, here in the city of Troy. And if our business keeps going, and all of you come to our branch, we'll keep hiring a lot more people here in the city of Troy. We're very concerned about safety, too. This is a really important branch to us, as the largest bank in Michigan and headquartered here in Troy. And me being a, I'm not currently a Troy resident, but for 28 years I was, and three different residences. Troy's important to me. We want to do a signature project on Big Beaver. And the reason we hired Arkin is he is one of the best developers in town. If you go around and you see some of the projects that he's done, I was with Comerica for 28 years, he did a few great projects for us there, and I really wanted to partner with him on this project here. I promise you, this will be one of the best projects that gets done here in Troy, and we are very concerned about the safety of the residents, and we'll do everything we can to make sure that everything is safe at that corner, and that everybody can get safely in and out of Flagstar Bank, because we want all of you to come there and bank with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Would someone move the resolution forward? I'll, I'll do so. Whereas AF Jonah Development has requested concept development plan approval and preliminary development plan approval concurrently pursuant to Article 11 of the City of Troy zoning ordinance for Big Beaver Center planned unit development located on the north side of Big Beaver. I'm not going to read the whole thing. No, I'm just going to read this first paragraph. Between Alpine and McClure in Section 20, currently zoned PUD 004, and R1B, one-family residence. We'll move the resolution forward. Would someone second it, please?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Councilman Teets. Discussion, please.
And Mayor, just for clarification, it's as printed in the agenda.
As printed in the agenda. Councilman Campbell?
Back to the traffic. In the letter that we have here, I think you state in your letter that there is a problem there with traffic, unless I'm reading this incorrectly. Please, this is your letter? Mr. Gearing?
Yes.
You said the driveway is too close to the intersection of Alpine and Big Beaver. Proximity may lead to problems with bank traffic leaving the site and the traffic queuing in along Alpine waiting to turn on Big Beaver. So you said, you said you didn't do a big study, but you took time to put that in your letter that there's going to be a problem. So I'm just kind of confused which side.
What I was looking at was the proximity of the, the site plan, of course, has been reviewed and revised, but the original design had a much wider driveway exiting as a one-way drive out to Alpine, closer to the intersection of Big Beaver. As I believe it was Mr. Crest mentioned, that there is an issue with traffic on Big Beaver turning onto Alpine and the Beaver turning onto Alpine, and there's the issue of the ability to see and be seen in terms of clear sight lines so that drivers can clearly understand what they're confronted with as they're either entering Alpine from Big Beaver Road or exiting the bank property. As I look at this location and its context with all that residential to the north, you would not normally expect to have a lot of queuing, of traffic coming out of Alpine and being delayed getting onto Big Beaver, except during the morning commute times. You know, people are in their homes, they need to get out to work, so they're coming out of where they live and dispersing through the city on the road network to wherever they're employed. So that is normally when you would see a lot of traffic queuing up, getting out onto Big Beaver. It also coincides when traffic is busiest on Big Beaver, which means they have to kind of wait for the gaps. And I do know enough about the signal system in the city to recognize that during the peaks, corridors like Big Beaver are running rather long cycle lengths for the signals. So when he indicated that they were looking at possibly a minute or even two minutes for the first few cars to find their gaps to get out, not at all unheard of, given the fact that a lot of times the signals are running on as much as two-minute cycle lengths. And as the platoons of traffic go down Big Beaver, once the platoon is gone, that's when the opportunity is to pull out of a side street like McClure or Alpine or any of the neighboring driveways. So all of that's pretty much well-understood. But then you get to the issue of midday and evenings. And yes, a road like Alpine is going to have traffic on it all the way through the day. But you're never going to see the peaks as you would in the morning rush hour when the neighbors themselves are leaving and trying to get to work. And it's during those times that the bank generally is most active. In fact, my experience with drive-up facilities like this is that they don't really have a lot of peak demands where you see big backups to drive-through facilities anyway, except possibly on payday Fridays. So most of the day, there's going to be very little bank traffic exiting, very little neighborhood traffic that they're going to interact with. And so I don't see a huge issue with the interaction of traffic leaving the bank but getting stuck in a backup of traffic on Alpine as they're trying to get out onto Big Beaver. My comments here are just a reflection of how inherently conservative I am, where I'm always trying to hedge my bets, push developers to provide greater margins of safety. And what they basically did is they narrowed the drive so that you don't have to worry about multiple cars trying to leave at the same time. And they did physically push the driveway further to the north. And those actions satisfied the concerns I had for this location.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilman's later?
May I speak to the developer for a second, please? Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
You heard the suggestion of moving the bank to the east side of the building. Have you had any discussion with the residents regarding that, that issue? And is it feasible for you or is that completely off the table?
Yes, we did meet. In fact, Jean said that she's lived at her home for over 50 years. I don't understand how a 48-year-old can live in one home for 50 years. So, yes, we did discuss and we've looked at, we looked at the ideas very seriously. Two things, in merchandising a property, the point positions of buildings are very important as far as tenancy goes. You have, right now on the larger building, you have two point positions that are important to us for leasing. The bank is the anchor. What we've created, you know, in merchandising the property, you put the anchor at the far end so that people will get drawn to that portion of the property. It has its own feature with a tower where signage is prominent for the bank. As far as our building is concerned, the larger building, you have the two-point positions on either end. And we created a center point, a focal point within the, but if I could get the elevation. I'm sorry. There you go. If you look at both the ends, we've created the towers on the end so that we could capture signage for the prospective tenants to go in. And then we, you know, those are the main focal points. Then we created a center point to draw the attention away from the center, I mean, the ends of the building, to the center with the focal point with the flag and that, so that we bring more attention to the middle. It's not just putting the bank at one end or the other. We're, we look at merchandising the property so that it's viable long-term. We create the property in a very generic form so that, long-term, we can put tenants in and out. I mean, tenants come and go. So that we have the ability to be able to put tenants in and out of this building and still be viable as far as merchandising. This property is what I call a shadow anchored by the mall. The mall is a, as a major attraction, and that's what brought us to this property. There are tenants that want to be in this corridor that can't afford the mall. And that's what we're creating. That's what we're looking to capture, our tenants that want to be here, that can't afford the mall, that want to be next to the mall. We played around. We did, we looked at the idea of putting the bank on the eastern end of the property. I believe it takes away from merchandising. I believe that it takes away from creating a walkable, the plaza, the whole plaza, the walk-through. And I believe that we screen the cars much more with putting the bank on the western end of the, of the development so that we could create that, that feeling that we're trying to accomplish by creating a walkable, sit-down plaza center. If I answered.
This would be a no-brainer for me if we didn't have somebody telling me that there could be a safety issue at Alpine and Big Beaver. Okay. I'm all for this project 100%. I like it. I welcome you to Troy. But I'm waiting for somebody to give me the other side that this is going to be a safe project at Alpine and Big Beaver. So I've asked the traffic guy and I didn't get an answer from him. That's the most important issue to me. You said you would work with the residents.
Absolutely, I would.
But what, what, what can you do?
Well, you know, I don't believe that, that turning motion, and I'm not by any means a traffic engineer or what have you. First of all, let me address, we're long-term holders of real estate. We're not developers that come in and sell. We, you can count for the last 35 years, on one hand, how many properties we've sold. We have to be safe. In order for us to be successful, we have to create a property that is, does all the items that we're talking about. You have, safety is a major issue for us also. The queuing and the movements that are going to be created by the bank being on the, on the east or western end, in my mind, I'm mute. I believe that the amount of traffic that this property is going to create versus the Monarch Plan, this is a blessing to the neighborhood. And I believe that the queuing from here, coming in and out of this property and the traffic that we're going to create is miniscule compared to what the traffic problem is along Big Beaver and people cutting through from Crooks, coming westbound and then southbound on Alpine. I think that, not this property, I think that the overall traffic flow on these streets have got to be looked at. And again, I'm not a traffic engineer. I think that the signaling needs to be looked at and possibly addressed in, you know, a tweak at Crooks and Big Beaver light may resolve the problem as far as exiting off of Alpine into Big Beaver. And I've met with the residents and I told them, you know, I'd like to look at that. I'd want to be as safe as possible also.
Well, now, the Planning Commission did their study and review and they were informed of these concerns of the residents, too. They voted five to one, was it? Five to one. Could you address that? Tell us how the Planning Commission overcame these concerns because they seem like valid concerns.
Many of the issues that were raised in regards to traffic and safety were raised at the Planning Commission meeting in itself. And they had similar concerns and similar issues, but through discussions as well as from the review memo from Mr. Dearing, they felt that the applicant has provided enough sufficient safety, circulation, as well as traffic alleviation to overcome any concerns that they have. And so they encouraged and welcomed this development, you know, with the five to one vote on behalf, in support of the project.
Thank you. Mayor Potemagines?
Okay. A couple of thoughts on this and it will lead to a question. But I think what we're looking for is perhaps some additional data regarding the traffic issue. I think all around, I can only speak for myself, but we've received some concerns from residents in terms of buffer, in terms of density, in terms of other things that individually they have questions about or they don't particularly want. I think the traffic issue specifically at the corner of Big Beaver and Alpine is one that has, has come up again and again. Obviously, it was discussed here at the meeting. I've heard about it. I think other council members have heard about it. And it's something that I am just feeling like we're not getting a very clear-cut answer. I know the Monarch project was very different. I wasn't here then, so I don't want to speak from experience, but I did do some research to try to get a hold of what some of the concerns were, if they're the same concerns we're hearing over again, even though it's a different project, which in my mind might say they just don't necessarily want something in this area at all. But I think that this specific concern about Alpine and Big Beaver is one that, I don't know if we have enough information to say for sure or with certainty, one way or another. We've got two pages here. The issue is addressed, but it's not really fleshed out. I know when the Monarch project was being discussed and planned for, it seemed like there was a lot more in-depth information provided. And it specifically addressed the trips that would be incurred in and out of this area based on the kind of property that they were looking to develop. And maybe that would be more helpful for us so we could really lean on that and say, this project is different, this is what is expected in terms of traffic. Right now, we've got one group saying it really may not increase traffic much at all and another group of people, especially the residents that live there, that are very concerned that the traffic will increase greatly. So I think having those specific numbers addressed or that specific issue addressed might make this decision a little bit more comfortable. Personally, I think that the development looks good. It's obvious that a lot of time and effort went into this. In terms of the decision that we're making, I think it's difficult because it is different than what we've done before. But I think a lot of the things that we're looking for in our Big Beaver corridor and what the community has said they're looking for are here in this project. And so I would like to find a way to make it work. But without that specific answer about that traffic issue on that corner, I think it's difficult to do that. So I don't know if it's possible that that's, if that's something that's been done already and we just don't have the information, it might be useful if it was addressed or if it's something that wasn't done because the size of the project is smaller in scale. I don't know if that's something that anyone could address.
A traffic, excuse me, a traffic study was not requested of the applicant for this project based on the scale and the scope of the project.
Is, you have a follow-up question? And like I said, I know that a lot of work has been put into this. And I know that it's probably in part because this is a different project and we're looking for different things in our development, especially in this corridor. But I'm wondering if that's something that could be done or if it's somehow prohibited because of the scope or scale of the project.
I was listening very, very carefully to the residents as they came up here during the public hearing portion, listening to their concerns. And without really wanting to oversimplify everything, I did hear themes that seemed to strike a very significant chord with them. First and foremost appears to be the concern that especially Alpine, but possibly also McClure, is being used as a cut-through route. They believe that they're experiencing traffic volumes far in excess of just what they themselves and their neighbors would generate during the morning, during the day, during the evening. It would be logical, then, to look at this as a police enforcement-type issue. And to the extent that the city could support the police department, you would look at doing a type of study that would validate to what extent that concern of cut-through traffic is a reality instead of a perception. See if you can measure the magnitude of it. And then there are not many, but there's some limited tools available to deal with that specific issue of cut-through traffic. Beyond that, then there is the complementary issue of this particular development, the location of its proposed driveways and how that's going to interact with the traffic that is otherwise on Alpine. Are we going to look at possibly the potential of traffic trying to get out of the site and not being able to make a clean exit because of traffic queuing up or backing up from Big Beaver Road as people are waiting to get onto Big Beaver Road? That's a relatively straightforward, simple kind of study. It's literally a matter of having somebody out there and measuring the backups over time and how that fluctuates through the day. It's not complicated or difficult to do at all. And it would provide the information to see the distance traffic is backing up through the day, through the ebbs and flows of traffic on Alpine. And then how that distance of queuing or backup, you know, where, where does their proposed driveways fit into that? If through essentially most of the day, the backups are only one or two cars and their driveway location is like two and a half or three cars away from the intersection, through most of the day, it's not going to be an issue. If there are more substantial backups, how long and how does that interrelate to the operational hours of the bank and its drive-through facilities? These are things that can be done to possibly provide more information to the councils. They want to consider that. Again, I'm an inherently conservative-type person. The way I phrase- The way I phrased my report is that I was trying to anticipate worst-case, and the changes that had been made based on my report have satisfied my intrinsic concerns for safety. I recognize that there is no such thing as perfect safety. Doesn't exist, never will, as long as somebody's walking or driving. But I'm looking at risk and how that translates into the potential for injury. And at least for my personal and professional threshold, the site plan meets my tolerance level in terms of providing for a viable development that still recognizes the need that it has to interact with our transportation system. So just a few ideas of the kinds of studies that could be undertaken. Is there anything else?
Thank you.
Where you go. Just got one more question. It's, I don't think anybody on Alpine would wait, would really be concerned of waiting for 10 minutes to get on to Big Beaver. I think one of their biggest problems is, that's a very, very narrow street. There's a park at the end, and schools at the end. Now, I think the risk may not be waiting in line as much as, you have school buses going down there, you have kids walking to school, you have kids riding bikes, there's no sidewalks. I think those are kind of important when you're looking into a study of traffic as well, because that's going to be, that could potentially be a problem. That's a far bigger problem than waiting to get on to Big Beaver.
Yeah. That was another one of the themes that I was hearing from the residents, is the fact that the neighborhood lacks sidewalks, especially as you work your way further north into the residential area and its proximity to the schools and that sort of thing. Of course, the site plan is going to be building sidewalks on their frontage, but that doesn't really address the more fundamental and underlying concern that they have of pedestrian safety well away from this corner.
Thank you. Councilman Teetz.
So the document we've seen, I guess, in our packet from 7/26, that was prior to the changes that have since taken place with reviews and so forth, is that correct? The letter that you wrote?
The letter I wrote was for an earlier version.
Right.
Yeah, this site plan was modified. Some changes were made based on the letter that Mr. Dearing provided. One of the changes, as Mr. Dearing indicated, the exit drive for the bank was, I believe, 27 and a half feet wide, and it was, the width was reduced to only 14 feet. And that 13 and a half feet was, extended the distance between Big Beaver and the drive. Another change that was recommended and that was implemented, was actually implemented in the PVD agreement, the rendition that Mr. Dearing saw showed the sign for the bank was significantly, significantly closer to Alpine. And his suggestion was, well, first of all, that it created a situation where it was unsafe. You just, you couldn't see the traffic going westbound, westbound on Big Beaver, could not see that, any cars that were queuing on Alpine, and vice versa. He suggested moving the sign further to the east. That would, that would accomplish a number of, I'm speaking for you, Steve. That would accomplish a couple of things. First of all, would make traffic that's queuing on Alpine more visible to the car that was going westbound on Big Beaver, so there was a visual queue. Would also provide, by moving it closer, the driver that was going westbound on Big Beaver would see the sign quicker. So their brain would trigger, oh, there's a bank here, so they would start slowing down quicker than they would if the sign was further to the west. And I've put way too many words in Steve's mouth.
No, that's all correct, plus the added benefit that if traffic on... That was all correct, plus the added benefit, the traffic on westbound Big Beaver, if they were going to turn onto Alpine, it literally cleared out that site triangle at the corner so that you didn't have to wait until after you've turned onto Alpine to see if there was even a vehicle waiting to exit the bank, drive-through facility. So it opened up that sight line completely to that extent.
Thank you again. Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, just a couple, couple of points. First off, there is another credit union in Troy that has an exit coming from the drive-throughs, and it's on a side street. And I don't see a lot of traffic there ever, and it is a pretty big credit union. It's right near South Boulevard and on Rochester. Granted, Rochester's not as busy a street in that particular area as Big Beaver would be. The other thing that's, that I don't see addressed on the drawing is, you know, if I'm doing 45 down 16 Mile Road, and I have to stab the brakes to pull into a bank and make that 20 mile an hour turn that Mr. Krent alluded to, is there not a cut-in in the plan so that you can get out of traffic without getting rear-ended? And then the third point would be, again, it's a big street. Is the light appropriate to try to alleviate, at least in the busier times? I know there are certain subdivisions that you, you come up to a light, and based on where you pull up to the subdivision, or up to the light, the light will trigger the signal so that traffic can get out. So just some other options. But yeah, I need some safety things addressed here as well before I'm ready to... I think it's a great plan, and I had Mr. Licari give us some ballpark estimates of the tax implications, and this is a, this is a win-win, I think, as long as we can get some of the safety issues cleared up.
Okay, so should we move for, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Teetz?
Yeah, a couple more questions. How many millions in, I guess the question is, how many millions in investment will this plan entail?
Well, I haven't budgeted yet, but this will end up as a $6 million investment all in.
Good.
And if I may, you know, the traffic along Alpine, the traffic that's going to be created off of our property is a no-right turn. What we're suggesting is that anything that comes out of the retail can't turn right and go up Alpine, so everything that is going to be directed southbound to come into Big Beaver. Also, from what I'm hearing is that, you know, peak times, morning peak times, these stores don't open, the fashion tenants don't open at 8:00 and 8:30 in the morning. I know that the bank, the drive-through will open at 8:30, and the bank itself doesn't open till later in the morning. So the traffic that we're going to be creating coming into, coming out of the property will miss the morning peak time and will be visited by the evening times. And if I make a suggestion, with this development, time is of the essence for us. The bank needs to be open because of a, another branch that they're transferring into this branch, the business of another, and with the employees that are coming in, I'd be willing to look at having the traffic engineers, or having my traffic engineers look at this and give us suggestions, and we'd be willing to live with the suggestions that they provide us. And if it's something that we can't live with, we'd have to come back in front of you to get the appropriate approvals. But if it's queuing, or if it's adjusting the drives, or if it's eliminating a drive, or whatever needs to be done, if it's something that we could live with, and I'd like to see if it's possible for staff to be able to police our site plan as far as that goes. And that gives us the ability to be able to get drawings done to submit while that traffic is, the traffic studies are being done, and to be able to get into the ground this year. Weather is an issue as far as construction is concerned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Slater?
I understand that completely, and I, I don't want to jeopardize your project, but can we legally put something in the resolution regarding a safety report and tie that to the project? I don't think we can, can we?
May I?
It would be very difficult to do what Mr. Jonah has suggested. It would be certainly my preference that we work on it and bring it back in two weeks, if that is, if that's something that is acceptable to you. You know, maybe not waiting until the traffic study is done, but maybe if we could wait two weeks to try and find out if there is a resolution, and we could put some language in the resolution. But I don't know if the developer is able to do that and is willing to do that.
Two-week delay, how would that affect your plans?
I just don't know what that would resolve. As far as coming back in two weeks, I...
Could I just follow up for a second? I don't, I don't know how many votes you have up here tonight, but I think the magnitude of the, or the scope didn't warrant a traffic study, but because of the issues with the residents, that has, I think, given rise to all of our concerns, and I don't feel comfortable voting on that myself. Not, Mr. Kent is not a traffic engineer, and Mayor Stein is not a traffic engineer. They're telling us some, some issues that are not based on their background. But I certainly would like to hear something from a traffic-safety standpoint. I don't care about the cut-through personally. That's not an issue with me. That's been going on in this city since they put the first side street in. I don't know how other council members feel, but from my experience, yes, that is a police issue, but when you go down there from the police department and you attack that problem, 90-some percent of the tickets you write are people that live in the neighborhood, okay? And that's a fact. So I'm not concerned about that. What I am concerned about is the queuing issue at Big Beaver and Alpine. Can we get that in two weeks? Could you wait two weeks, and you'll have my vote if that issue is resolved?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well...
So we'll, we'll move a motion to postpone the resolution for two weeks while we get a traffic study.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, vote please.
I'm sorry, that's going to be postponed till September 24th?
Correct.
Can I just get a quick clarification as to what the traffic study might entail?
Unless somebody...
Are you just looking for queuing on Alpine?
I am.
Just kind of the existing background information of the site?
The timing of the gaps in traffic, the stoplights and their proximity to that intersection would be interesting to note, and...
There was a valid point by Councilman Henderson about traffic light?
Well, I was also going to say, I thought it was rather a...
We start expanding beyond counting cars in a queue and looking at a network-level analysis of the signals, because I have talked with the county. I did meet with Gene Stein and Tom Krent. I have talked to the road commission, their traffic safety people. Locating a signal at that location is not something they would like to do. It's not something that fits in with the overall movement of traffic on Big Beaver. So we can pull data from the signal system, but to start looking at kind of a large network level analysis of the system with the signals is much more involved, much more costly than just counting or cars queuing up on the street where literally someone would sit out there and count cars.
That would be good for me, and the other issue, the Councilman Henderson, a...
Cut-in.
The acceleration lane, is that an option there?
This site, Big Beaver with six lanes, you're not going to, our development standards wouldn't require a right-turn lane here. I mean, there's, you've got three lanes of traffic there. I mean, you've got multiple sites on here that generate significantly more traffic than this will ever generate. That don't require returns.
What about moving a light, a light down further east?
Well, Mr. Krent did talk about that.
Right.
He had some suggestions, and those are things I did talk with the county about. And the way the signals are set up currently is, that's how, they would like to keep them that way. Big Beaver is a county road.
I understand that, but...
I know, I know. And we did look at, we did look at, is there a way to move these signals around? And in talking with Tom, he's not been pushing that issue. His issue has been the location of the driveway out onto Alpine and one curb cut. I mean, he, there were a laundry list of items that we worked through with them to get down to this. The driveway was narrowed, moved north. We thought that would help accommodate the issue of trying to provide more room for turning vehicles in, in conflict with vehicles exiting the site. There's, the times at the bank, I mean, if you go to most banks now, the drive-through, the, actually, the traffic in and out, I mean, you've got the electronic bill pay, you've got direct deposit. There's not a lot of peak-hour times people are going to the banks. So, I mean, that kind of all factored into what we asked OHM to look at. But we can do a, kind of a quick-and-dirty-type study, looking at queuing on Alpine. But if we start getting into Councilman Henderson's questions about signal timings and that type of stuff, it gets to be much more involved.
We could do that later. Yeah.
Councilman Teetz?
Is, do we have any city consultant right now that thinks this is a bad idea?
I'm sorry?
I mean, have any, do any of our consultants or employees right now have concerns that they've reviewed this plan? Our traffic consultant, who has a very conservative threshold, sees this as a satisfactory plan? I just think in two weeks, what more will we know? I mean, we'll know the count and the queue, but is it, I just don't, I guess I'm a little frustrated because from what I can tell, it was unanimous at the planning commission, with the exception of someone, I'm not sure what motivation, but apparently didn't think it was the right idea. And then...